Why can't you hear me?
No feedback either.
Can you hear me?
Okay.
Is my voice, hello?
There we were.
Hello?
This is party.
Whoa, 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 feelings?
It's on 29th, about seven miles from here, Route 80.
From 80?
Yeah, the state owns up to here. There's conservation land all here. Reflection Lakes in Naples has a conservation.
Right, right north.
Yeah, mitigation for project in Naples.
Okay.
So it's part of watershed. Yeah, and there's a, let's see here, this is where, up here is where this gave Paul Citrus that was bought by Benidorm many years ago when they were going to do, they got annexed into the city.
For sure.
But then it went with the recession and everything.
I know, that was supposed to be my next ticket to heaven.
Oh, okay, yeah, that one, yeah. And so that went south, that was to Paul.
Yeah.
That's about 12 years.
This is.
So now I'm waiting on back, God bless.
Yep. There's a property, 50 acres.
We've been in Florida.
It's a way to, and I need to get back out there, get away, you go out there, all you hear is the wind in the trees, you see birds, and there's, in the, in the wintertime, it's so dry, you can kick up sand. In the rainy season, in the cypress storm in the marsh.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is Thursday, June 2nd, 2016. Time for the meeting of the Gateway Services Community Development District Board of Supervisors. We have a quorum. Please stand and join us in the pledge to our flag and country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. If you have a noise-making machine like this, please put it on mute for the balance of the meeting. You wish to speak to the board, there are forms on the table back there. We want you to fill out and give to the manager, Justin, raise your hand so they'll know where they go. Do we have folks that want to speak to the board?
Do, Mr. Chairman.
Please give us the first one.
Ed Tinkle would like to speak on an employment agreement, also aquagenics and the irrigation.
Afternoon, Ed Tinkle, 111-80 Bent Pine Drive. I have three items. First one is the follow-up on the discussion at the last meeting on the aquagenics situation as it relates to latoral maintenance. We have now received back, and I believe April has a copy of these documents. At the time, if you recall, last time I was here, I was kind of guesstimating numbers based upon rules of thumb. Got back ahold of George and told him that it was imperative to get numbers ready for the board because Cal had indicated that at this meeting or next meeting, you needed basically the high number for your budgeting purpose. George sent back, aquagenics sent back, essentially a multi-year proposal, and in essence, what he is estimating to do, what we call the first shot at cleaning up the latorals and cleaning all 59 ponds, is $30,000. That's one, one-time payment, and it could go one month, could go into the second month, but $30,000 is the estimate. He then has a separate, what he calls, visit schedule of June through October, and I didn't know on your budget, if your, your year ends in October or it begins in October. Does it begin in October 1st or ends?
September 30th.
September 30th, okay, so then he might have an extra month. But anyway, the amount was 22,462. He prepared a schedule of all the ponds and delineated his estimated cost of that 22,462 over that five-month period. So if that would be, if you enact that today, or yesterday, be June, July, August, September, October, it would really only be four months.
What is that for, Ed?
For this year?
That's, I'm sorry? What is the 22?
That was the estimated cost for the five-month period, so you're going to prorate that by, what, 80% roughly?
So the 30Ks for the cleanup and then the...
Thirty, 30Ks of one-time cleanup.
And then 22 is reoccurring follow-up?
Yeah, just what we'd call routine maintenance.
Okay, yep.
Then he also gave us a proposal on that same tabulation for 2017 projection, and that came out to be $44,93 a month, which is about $54,000 a year. So those are kind of your budgetary numbers to go with. The big thing is, is that we've been pushing, is we've implemented the, or you've implemented the pond maintenance standard, and this contract amendment would be nothing more, or contract addendum would be nothing more than a continuation to enter that and start doing that work. So anyway, that's the aquagenics. I didn't see it on the deal. I didn't know if you were going to do it next meeting or when that...
It's on a target.
Okay, okay. That was one item. Second?
Could I ask a question? Or do you want me to wait till the end?
Go ahead.
I'm still a little bit confused. So there's the, the initial $30,000, okay? And then within that four-month period, which was thought to be five, but it's, but it's four, prorata, the 4,500 bucks a month, or say, it'll be about $18,000?
Correct.
Real number.
Yeah, real number.
What are they doing differently? How long will this $30,000 task take? And how does it finger joint with the other?
Okay. His, the way this was set up was, as you know, we've done little to know latoral maintenance since God only knows when.
I understand.
And so what his thought was, is that let's go in and clean up all of the ponds, and when I say all, it's not all. We have some ponds that do not have any latorals in them, and he identifies that on the table. He's given us a price-by-price breakdown per pond. But it's to go in and actually clean them up, removing a lot of the thallia, removing some of the other stuff that's in those ponds that has just grown very dense over the years, in an attempt to try to get it down to where it meets our standards that we call for, which is that four-to-10-foot wide strip around the ponds, very similar to what Pelican Reserve is doing. Once that's done, and he thinks that that will take a month, maybe two months, he then comes in and does just the routine maintenance of the latorals, like basically they're doing for you guys over there, very similar situation. The only difference is, is that I, I know you guys do yours on a pond-by-pond breakdown, talking to Dave. What I don't know is, is do you have some other detailed specification or bid schedule that calls it out? Right now, he has just simply given us an estimated cost per lineal foot, and I think it was like 37 cents or something like that.
Did you ask if he would do, would be similar to what's already in, kind of in force right now?
Well, he knows that because we're, we both are under the same latoral maintenance plan.
Right.
Yes. I'm, I'm only going by what he said. Here's, here's the real problem in all this, Gary, is that we're kind of projecting to 2017 when, and in fact, it's not certain that aquagenics will still be here, because you're going to go out for bid and redo this again. What I'm hoping to do is start the process, and I think April may be working on it with Ellen Molly, is start the process of developing a good specification for pond and latoral maintenance, such that, and I'm going to pick Dave's brain, Bob's brain, big time on this. You guys have done it. To outline and enumerate the things that you guys have got in yours that result in a dollar value. I don't mind using the cost per cents, or so many cents per foot for estimating purposes, but when we go out and start paying, I want to have it delineated based upon tasks and by pond, so that, one, is that if he doesn't perform, I think that we should have, and my recommendation strongly going to be, is that there is a, a penalty. If you don't meet 15%, or I should say, 85% of the requirements on a pond, you get whacked. You lose money. But have some type of a penalty in there for not achieving whatever the requirement is. But right now, this is just the estimate to get us through 2016, and as I understand it, the, the, the contract expiration date of his and your fiscal year pretty much are about the same time.
Yeah.
So we've got probably a couple of months to get this thing ready, to be able to go out and take bids and have somebody here ready to go, even, even if it's aquagenics, have somebody ready to go under this new standard by...
Does it make any fiscal sense at all that if there's overgrowth in one area and undergrowth in another, that you transplant the latorals from the overgrowth to the undergrowth? Or is that just fiscally not smart?
That's out of my pay grade. I can find out that. I'll ask, I'll ask and find out.
Okay.
It, it might be, you know, if you're going out and you're buying what they call the bare root, what better than get your own bare root? Maybe what you only have to do then is you don't pay for the, the material, you pay for the labor.
Exactly.
Now, whether or not they'll do that, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. That's a good question, I'll ask about that. The next item I have kind of gets going into probably what George is going to talk about, and only because of the fact that I've been involved and recipient of some of the emails, and it generated some questions in my own mind. Is this issue of irrigation and water usage? I've had people in Gateway Greens complaining about the, the usages fluctuating. So I called over and staff sent to me, and I was a little surprised, staff sent me the Lee County standards on irrigation and watering, and, I mean, I've been coming to these meetings for 10 years, and you could have knocked me over with a feather. I thought we had our own set of standards for Gateway CDD, and apparently we do not. The entire implementation of watering standards is left to Lee County. Well, I can guarantee you, Lee County isn't going to come in here and check squat. So we need somebody checking, and what's, what's, I'm bringing this up for, is that I can go up and down any street in Gateway on a daily basis, and you follow these standards, especially for the residential, where it's divvied into two, residential and commercial. It's divvied into two categories. Those with odd addresses and those with even. The ones with the odd addresses can only water on Wednesday and Saturday, and the ones with even can only water on Thursday and Sunday, which then, as I understand again, the CDD waters Monday, Tuesday, Friday, Sunday. You guys water four days, whereas everybody else waters two days. That's my understanding. I don't know that that's 100%.
Supposed to water?
Yeah, supposed to water. I don't know how it's set up, I don't know what the, the way it goes, but what it appears to me is happening is we're getting overlapping, and when everybody's trying to water, when I first came to Gateway, I was always told that the prime time to water for residential is 2:00 to 5:00 in the morning. Well, I talked to staff, and they say, "Don't water at that time, because that's when we're watering, and the pressure's going to be way down." And I know George has seen some huge fluctuations in the pressures. It doesn't bother me if I water from 5:00 o'clock at night till 11:59, that doesn't bother me, I'll just go out and redo the timer. But I think what's going on is we've got one heck of a lot of violations of people watering the yards that are way beyond the 2 and the 4, and I can tell you, Lee County isn't going to do squat about it.
What do you expect us to do about it?
I think the CDD should pass a rule or regulation that does the same thing, and then implement it.
And we could hand it down, hand it down to the HOAs.
Yeah, you can, that's a good point, because Tony will remind me real quick, like, you guys can't fine.
Yeah.
The only thing you could do, though, the only thing you could do, and you have the ability now to do it, is you can surcharge the hell out of it. So if you want to water, and your watering day is Wednesday, Saturday, and you're watering on Monday, Tuesday, that water's $11 a gallon. That'll stop it.
Well...
Not a fine, just a charge. But anyway, my point is, I thought that the CDD was monitoring that, and I come to find out, we, we don't do anything, other than I went to the website, and this is all we have on it, that's the Lee County stuff, but we've got people out there that are violating it like crazy, which is leading to this issue that I know George is talking about, and that is, is that we haven't got enough water to go around. Well, I think we have enough water to go around, but it's got to be evenly distributed. When Danny did his design on checking the ability of the system to get water out, he did not design that based on the basis of every house using the water at the same time. Because if he does, the system ain't going to work. I can tell you that right now. Not big enough. But if you go back and assume 50%, then you've got a better chance, and I imagine that's what his model was based on. So also I'm saying is, I think there needs to be some consideration, public notice, whatever, to let people know that this, this can't continue, or otherwise, we're going to be spending a lot of money making major improvements to our irrigation system.
Mr. Newbar wants to say something.
I want, I want to inquire, Danny, and Ed may, may, you know, ask me why I don't know this, but do we electronically have any way of knowing who's doing what? Do we have any kind of sensor that transmits via the cloud, the software, via the whatever, that we have some type of software database that we know when people are actually watering?
The new meters have the capability. I'm not sure if they're set up, you know, they're, they're add-ons that you can, you can place, and I'm not sure if they have that capability as they exist today, but they do have, they do have that ability.
I can't remember anymore, because I remember that that was part of the option, as I remember it.
Remember the leakage issue?
Huh?
Remember the leakage issue? We talked, that was the benefit of this program, that if you have a leak on your property...
Correct.
We can go back and check it and tell you, if you're, you know, in Hawaii or whatever, hey, you're using water.
But you can look at any individual time and see when flow is going through that meter. So manually, you can, you can definitely do it that way. That would obviously be a chore.
I don't think we've got the staff, and I don't think we want to have the staff that become irrigation police. On the other hand, if there was a software program that transmitted that data, and that somebody came in in the morning and went, "There it is..."
An exception report or something along those lines.
Then it makes, then it makes economic sense, and then follow up with, you know, stern letter and, or soft letter followed up by a stern letter, followed up by sending Danny to the front door or something, but...
Well, if you go to that surcharge, I suggested, that bill should be able to pull that right off of all the water that you use that's outside your registered time. Should very, very easily be able to do that.
But we first need the database. We need, we need.
Well, I think the first thing that's happened is, we need to create a CDD standard. So we need to create an irrigation standard, and I don't know if we baseline it off Lee County, I don't know what tweaks we'll need to make, but one, we need to put something in place, and then two, socialize the new standard, both from a district perspective, trickle it down to the HOAs, and I, I don't think all HOAs even have the ability to fine either. So, you know, the first step would be to communicate, try to socialize it, see if people would do the right thing. And then, if we're still seeing, by monitoring, if we can get some controls in place, if it continues to be a problem, then I think we would need to take the step, next step, and, you know, either issue warnings or, you know, surcharges or whatever. But I would much rather put a standard in place, try to educate everyone first before we, you know, start hiking up prices.
We did this seven years ago, and it fell on deaf ears. That was when we had a real water shortage, if you recall.
Well, the county has standards, but...
Hold on every second.
Could, could some of this be due to the building that, you know, our population has grown quite a bit? So could some of the lack of water, the pressure be due to the new construction?
Yes, my, my experience, and everywhere is different, but you, you typically use more irrigation than what you actually put in from the, on the wastewater side. So you put in, you get out, but the, but you have the wells that supplement that. We're actually looking right now, I've got one of my, one of my interns is actually doing some calculations. He's actually talked to Terry today, just to see where we stand as far as a supply standpoint goes. But, but as far as the pressure goes, that's, that's not an issue, because we're not at a supply deficit. As you move forward, you're, you're, you're going to reach a point where you're going to have to add more water, but you have that ability through the groundwater. You use more groundwater than you do reclaimed water from the wastewater plant as it, as it is throughout the, the, the majority of the year. Now, keep in mind, too, that, you know, we're entering the rainy season, so most people should be shutting their irrigation systems off. So I'm not saying that, you know, everybody has to go and shut it off today. But keep in mind, too, that the Water Management District also, when you get into those periods like seven years ago, will place a requirement for, you know, for irrigation restrictions. So where they will only allow you to irrigate on certain days or odd days or...
I understand, but we're still under it.
They, they have sometimes been on it for, for, you know, two, three years. I personally don't know.
Yeah, we, we still are, to the best of my knowledge, but I'm still, I'm back to another thing, which you just opened up another part of my brain, which is, why is it that, remember the negotiations that we had with Lee County over all of this and the volume of water, and how much we were assured of, of the irrigation water, et cetera, et cetera? Okay?
As far as we know, as far as we're concerned, 100% of what is produced by that plant comes to Gateway.
Thank you very much. So what you just said, and maybe you just kind of misspoke in your transition phase, you said that the supply was, was adequate and therefore, but then it was suddenly that the supply wasn't. So is it the fact that we are not getting adequate volume, even if we're getting 100%, that we're not getting adequate volume out of Lee County, and then we have to supplement? And/or, you said also, that we more supplement than we use Lee County? Or is it because of the fact of suddenly we come from an X-inch pipe down to an X-minus pipe, and the volume restricted, therefore can't handle?
Now, the latter, the latter really, the latter is different from the, the first supply and, and then the, the pressure side. The pressure side and why we're experiencing pressure issues right now, it's really a system issue, that there are, there are more users trying to use water at the same time, the demand, which means that when that happens, you're trying to push more water through the pipes, which results in greater head loss. Greater head loss means that your pressure is lower. So back to the first part of it, when the county expanded the plant, they, and they've expanded their service area in, to outside of Gateway. You know, for years, the, the flow was only within Gateway.
Right.
Now they've expanded that out, so anything that comes in from outside of Gateway helps us, because that's, that's more Q-in than, than, than Q-out outside of Gateway, and Q being flow. Now, we are also going to be getting some commercial development coming in with Publix, that will add additional flow.
Then there's the other place that was the threatened next large development at the corner of...
And, and in fact, that has raised its head again, and we got a call actually from Morris Depew, from, that, that is back up in...
Inside the district or outside the district?
It would have, the flow would come to this plant. It's outside of the district, but it would...
Yeah, I think it's a project from, we call it the Fountain, was the former name.
Yeah, that, that's where it will get interesting with those discussions about, because they're going to want flow back.
And it's yours, two years ago, I did an analysis for a 12-month period, and we were running about 50% reliance on 100% of the wastewater and 50% augmented from our wells. About 50/50.
And we're, and I'll be able to report back at the next meeting exactly where we sit today with that, because that's exactly what we're, what we're analyzing. Yeah, it was about that 50.
The other thing, too, that probably everybody wants, and how are, what's the condition of our, our wells? Because some years back, we had a...
Yeah, the condition of the wells are, they're, they're fine, and we can report on all of that, but where I was concerned is, you know, we did the analysis several years ago, and the concern was that you have, you have one or two new, newer wells that you've installed. Your new wells that you're permitted for are deeper wells that have higher salinity. So that was where I wanted, was concerned, is the more we depend on the deeper water, the more issues we have. We want that, we want that higher flow of reused water in the shallower wells to offset the, the higher salinity water. And then it's also an operational thing, where you, you don't want to be running that well or those wells, the deeper wells with the high salinity, for a longer period of time, and then increasing that concentration up, so...
So does this get into the capital improvement program?
At this point, I don't think you have any issues for, right now, I think there's some education, there's probably some parameters that need to be placed to, for irrigating restrictions, but...
We had about that $550,000 for the 20-inch that was on the Capital Reserve for about five, six years, until you just build it as a part of the Griffin Road, Griffin Road project.
And you've added them.
To me, that was the only one we had. Well, no, we had something on the wells.
The, the wells have been, have been rehabbed, rehabilitated, and before Yvonne left, you were upgrading your, your high-service pump station.
Can we stop this now, since you're going to give us a full report at our next meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, is that okay with everyone?
Sure.
The, the last item I had was relative to the general manager contract. Just throw out some points, because I know you're going to have a discussion about it. One is, I'm certainly glad it's come down to the time where the general manager, I guess the operations manager, or whatever you call this position, is coming back and will be an employee of the district. I applaud you for that, assuming you do it. The second thing is, why an agreement? Why an agreement? You, you don't need an agreement. Third one is the, as, as other CDD's been contacted for, I know the salary, and it's nothing against April, because I think April's done a tremendous job. I wish she had an engineering degree, but she doesn't have an engineering degree, but anyway, it is what it is. Those numbers are huge. Those numbers are huge. Have they been checked? Have they been verified? Have they been vetted with other communities, CDD's similar to our size? Is, is it in the ballpark? Which raises the other question, is, are we going out for an RFP for the, for this position? Or are we, have, have we done that through trial by fire? And by, she's, she's had the fire, all right. She's been, been in a tough position for the last couple of months, and, again, she's done a very good job. Same thing on questions on benefits. Some of the benefits package looked interesting, to say the least. And then the other one is, I didn't see, and I don't know how you're going to do it, I thought there would be a greater delineation of duties and responsibilities in the agreement as to what this position is going to be. It was almost like you do what we tell you, and we'll try to give you the people and the staff and the furniture to do it with. I think it needs to be a little bit more broad than that for this position. Needs to, my thoughts. It's all I had.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Ed? Any further questions for Ed? Okay, thank you very much, Ed, Mr. Manager.
Kathleen Flaherty for the budget.
Could I, may I be, wait till the budget comes to see if, when Stephen presents it, it's answered?
All right. Mr., the next person?
Then I have non agenda items. Dolores Linscott for medians.
Dolores Linscott, Walden Lakes. I want to talk to you about the medium in front of Stony Brook, and please take my remarks as trying to help, because that's what I'm trying to do. You created the Landscape Advisory Committee, and there was four men and myself on that committee, and all of us had experience in landscaping of some kind, irrigation, whatever. One of the best committees I've ever been on, and I've been on a lot of your committees. However, it, they didn't last.
The committee? The committee didn't last? Is that what you...
Well, those four men. The only one left, the only one left is JB. The three other men and myself have left. And the reason being, I don't know, I can't speak for them, but I know the reason I left was because there is no way that I want to be associated with that medium in front of Stony Brook, because we're spending a lot of money, and it has got to be the ugliest medium I've ever seen, in my opinion. One thing, they were supposed to follow a blueprint, and I asked them not to put palms in, but I got outvoted. Because you took palms out, I didn't think they should be palms put back in. However, I got outvoted, so you got palms. The palms were supposed to have been three Alexandras in a row, then about 10-foot and a Thatch Palm, then three Alexandras and a Pat Thatch Palm. It's not like that. They're all together, all down a line. Exorias and the Green Island Ficus are planted so close together, there's no room to grow. There should be at least two and a half foot between each one of those. So when I asked Manscape why they did that, and he said, "Because the architect ordered that many." Well, when you're a landscaper and you see that's wrong, then you stop and you go to the man and you say, "You ordered too many." And you don't plant them right up against each other like that. One of the new committee members said, "Well, just prune them." Well, you can't just prune them, that's not the way. Another one said, "Well, it's going to look better when it grows." When you plant landscaping, it should be pretty from day one and just get prettier as it gets older. In my opinion, Manscape has paid close to a million dollars to do our maintenance on our boulevard, and it sure does not look like a million-dollar boulevard. I feel like, and I really, really mean this sincerely, that we should look for a new landscape company, or else let somebody else plant our boulevard, because now we've got a chance to really make Gateway beautiful, and I don't want another Stony Brook medium on the rest of the boulevard.
Did, did Manscape do the installation of the plants?
They did. And when I asked them why they planted the palms the way they did, he said, "That's the way they're supposed to be." So we produced the blueprint and showed him, and JB said, "Well, we'll just take some out and plant them somewhere else."
Who said that, please?
JB said that. He's the chairperson. See, that's a wasting of my money, your money, everybody's money that belongs to Gateway, and it should be done right first, and not later.
Comments? Uh, I think we need to have, to talk with the architect before we go any further.
Have you looked at the medium? Have you been over there?
I have.
What'd you think?
Just about every day.
Did you think it looked okay?
At the, at the risk of being tarred and feathered, no, I don't think it looks okay.
I didn't either.
I'm not an expert, and so I generally keep my tongue in my head.
Yeah, but you've got good taste, Bill. You've got.
Thank you very much. Dolores, are you finished with us for now?
Yeah, and I just have a quick statement. I, um, I had asked Dolores to come and, and, and speak today if, if she was so inclined, for, for two reasons. One, um, I was very disappointed that she resigned from the landscape committee, because I, I think what the board needs is committees with subject matter experts on them. I mean, Ed Tinkle's a great example of having someone with expertise acting on our behalf. And you've got to have those individuals that bring knowledge and expertise to our committees to fill the gaps that the board may not have. Um, and we, a lot of things wouldn't get done at the level that they have gotten done if we don't have residents and these committee members. And I was very disappointed when, when Dolores got so frustrated that, that she resigned, because this landscape committee's gonna be very critical over the next, you know, six months.
If we go forward, it's gonna be hugely important.
Yeah. Especially over the next six to eight months, because with the, the master, um, landscape architecture project that's going on, we're gonna need a very solid, uh, committee. And, and a good committee, uh, in my opinion, includes subject matter experts, and also those that just have good opinions and, and are gonna participate in some of the work. So I wanted Dolores to come up to make sure that the board was aware of what her position was. And then second, the fact that, because I wasn't, I, I told Dolores that I would, I would never have said anything directly to her, because I thought she had a hand in, in the design, and so, you know, to her face, I would've said, "Oh, it looks great." Uh, but when she told me that it wasn't what was approved or recommended by the landscape committee, um, I felt a little better, because I, I know what Dolores' reputation is, and, uh, and I was relieved, uh, that that wasn't what the committee had, had recommended. So, again, we had a huge issue around those palm trees, and we went back and forth, and I live in Stony Brook, so I, I, I know what the conversation has been. Uh, and then ultimately, to get palm trees back in that medium, and we're already seeing weed growth coming through some of that ground cover, um, and it, it, it doesn't look that great. And, and I'm not a landscape architect, but I do know putting exoras that close together that it just didn't seem right to me, um, so.
So you think we oughta have a conversation with the architect?
We, we need to have a conversation with the architect and, and our, our landscaping company, because Dolores is, um, you know, one of the statements is, "I don't care if the, if the architecture says 10 exoras, uh, plant 10." They should have the expertise to say, "You don't plant them, you know, any further than, you know, 24 inches apart," or whatever, to promote the growth. There's one, and I think we pay Manscape enough, that someone should've said, "Hey, you might wanna, you might wanna look at this, um, this architecture or your plant design, because it's, it's not gonna promote healthy growth," or, you know, provide that feedback. If not, it's just a matter of, we're gonna get paid for, for 40 installations, and if we take off 10, that's less than, you know, I, I just, I think there should've been oversight on, on both accounts, and on, from our staff perspective, we should've caught, um.
Right.
We should've caught the fact that the plan wasn't being implemented, so that's just my comments on that.
I got way too many calls and way too many emails jumping me, because they know me. I've been here for almost 20 years, and they know who I am, and they know I'm on that committee, so.
Am, am, or were?
I'm sorry?
You said you, you are on that committee? I thought you said.
I, I just resigned, and I, I didn't want to resign, because I know that I can help make the boulevard pretty, but we've only got one man on there now that's a landscaper, and he lives in Hampton Greens, and we got JB, but JB doesn't live in Hampton Greens, and he works for Lee County. And he's the one that told us, "You can't put very high things in there," according to Lee County, and yet he comes out with big palms.
We'll look into it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dolores.
George Huskamp, uh, coming on the meeting for May 19th.
George Huskamp, and I, uh, own and live at the property at 12820 Vista Pine Circle. Before I get started on my tirade, I would like to, um, mention to the board that my wife was, mentioned to me about the improper planting of the, um, horticulture on that, that same area that's being talked about, and her main comment was, "You just don't plant them that close together." Now, I have been a, not have been a fan of, uh, Manscape for quite a while. I believe you've heard me on numerous occasions say that they're the, uh, something like they're the pinestraw kings of, uh, Lee County. And, uh, the next time you see me, I hope to have a shirt, a tee-shirt on that says, "Welcome to Gateway, pinestraw capital of Lee, of Florida," because I think they're a bunch of bums. To back that up, uh, I have some friends who live over in, in, uh, Legends, and at one point, Manscape was working over there, and, uh, they just, they were terrible. They've got an O in there, it's not much better, but the big problem is, as Doug mentioned, somebody has to be watching this stuff. And I've been complaining about, uh, lack of super, lack of supervision from the powers that be in, uh, Gateway ever since, almost ever since I started coming to these meetings, which was sometime around 2000 or 2001. And, uh, it would be nice if we had, if we had a way without creating a police force to supervise some of these things, and I don't, I can't say it in that particular one, I have an idea. I'd like to mention one other thing that, um, Ed Seachill, Ed Tinkle and I have a slight agreement as to where the problem is on, on irrigation. I don't deny that the, his main contention is correct. That is, that we need to have some control over what, uh, people are doing. To set up an electronic system is more than I think we want to pay, but I do believe that the solution is a two, is two, so, or two things have to be done. One, there has to be a set of rules, um, put up that addresses Gateway itself, because the overall, the ones that come from the county don't match our numbering systems, as a matter of fact. And they don't address things that, where there's a combination of commercial and residential properties. And that's as much of anything. I, early in the game, I used to try to water in the mornings, as we've talked about, and I found that at that particular time, may not be the case now, because I've changed what I do, but, uh, the commercial properties were just bombarding the tanks, to the point that the tanks were empty by about 6 o'clock in the morning. Now, the tanks are the two storage tanks where, where the, uh, water from the sewage treatment plant and from the wells is collected and then pumped out to the system. And so, uh, until you get some control of what's going on, you will always have trouble. But, and that's, this is an awfully big but, you can, you can't just do it with control. What needs to be done, personal opinion, of course, is that the, uh, supply needs to be increased. If you increase the supply to the point, instead of being, say, let me just guess at some numbers. If everybody, if all the people water when they wanted to, we would probably only have about 80% of the water that we need. Now, I'm not advocating that people do, uh, just exactly what they want, but you need to get closer to a unusual, slightly higher demand than just saying, "Well, 50% of the people water this time, 50% that time," and that's gonna solve the problem, because it won't. There's too many things that happen. I can give you a, a personal example. I, uh, have tried to, to follow the rules, as they were, before the last time I looked at it, but I had too many people in my neighborhood who were watering outside of this situation, just like they're saying. But, all it took was one or two neighbors who were watering four times a week instead of two times a week, and I couldn't water. Well, I could water, but it was, that's all, all the water I would get. And so I had to look around, try to figure out when I could do it, because nobody's willing to change, everybody wants to do it their own way, and so I had to try to fit in between them. Well, at that point, I got to the point where I said, "H E double L with it, I'm going to water when I want to." Because unless you've got a system that will come close, I didn't say you had to have 100%, or anything like that, but you've gotta have it closer than we are right now. And I, I call that a safety factor. They don't, the, the, the design calculations that we're using don't allow for enough of a, um, error or a safety factor, so that, we, we're close enough that you can make, that the, the whole community can make a schedule work. You can't make a schedule work where you're just right up against the limit. Somebody have a question?
Questions for George?
No, I haven't finished yet.
You're not finished yet?
No. Thank you. I hope not, anyway. Am I over my time? I'll come back next week.
Well, we've got a lar, long agenda here, George. If you could hold it till next week, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. I'm sure, well, let me say one thing. I think that the irrigation system is the problem, the potential problem of the irrigation system is on a par with the, uh, lakes and, and, uh, the lake system. The board, let that just get pushed aside and pushed aside until we've got a major issue. The irrigation system can be the same level of problem, and if we don't take, start doing things right now, we're going to be in the same shape in another two or three years, and we'll be of the same extra money that's, that's being paid right now to take care of what wasn't done when it should've been done.
Thank you, George. Mr. Manager?
James Brand, uh, regarding Griffin Drive, streetlights, irrigation system pressure, and storm leak levels.
Good afternoon. My name is, uh, James, or Jim Brand. I'm a resident at 10154 Avalon Lake in Hampton Park. Uh, first, let me thank all of you for your service. I appreciate what you do for us. I know it's not perfect, but no political system that we live with is. In January, on the, uh, meeting of January 7th, I came and I spoke about two issues. The first issue was, uh, overflights by, uh, air, air traffic from the airport. Uh, the chairman of the, uh, supervisors committee wrote a wonderful letter to, uh, the port authority. We finally got a response. Ed doesn't agree with it, but Gateway is not a no-fly zone. The only no-fly zone in the United States is over the capital of the United States, Washington DC. So we have drones that aren't regulated, we have helicopters, we have commercial air flights flying over Gateway. And, uh, we, we're just gonna have to live with that, because that's the law of the land. I want to speak about the second agenda item I brought up on January 7th, and that was the lack of streetlights on Griffin Drive from Little Gem, which is right at Magnolia, uh, community to SR82. There are no streetlights. At that time, I, I asked that. On, uh, January 30th, I sent a note to the managing, uh, to the managing supervisor, to CDD, asking for the status of the streetlights. Didn't get a response. I engaged WCI, who engaged WCI, and they provided a blueprint of eight streetlights that will be installed on Griffin Drive. The blueprint is dated January the 21st. Here we are in June. No work is being done. I engaged WCI, they talked to Florida Power and Light. We're so busy, we don't have time to install those streetlights. If you drive on Griffin Drive at night, it's pitch black. If you don't put your lights on bright, you can't see anything. Concern is, it's a huge safety issue. So who gets sued when somebody's badly injured or killed? I would, my request to the board, to the supervisors committee, is that you would engage Florida Power and Light and see if you can assist us in getting those streetlights installed, based on their, their, uh, their blueprints are for eight lights, and boy, that will be great. But no work. Huge safety issue. I implore you to write a letter similar to the letter that you wrote to Lee County Port Authority about the airport, even though we are having overflights. We would really like to have some streetlights. The next thing I want to talk about is irrigation. Oh, wow, you guys are probably tired of that. But, in Hampton Park, our property, Hampton Park, is still under WCI control, under their developer. I'm a HOA resident board member. I work very closely with WCI board members and with our property management company. We do everything we can to get our, um, residents to follow the Lee County regulation. People say, my, and this is latter part of April, first part of May of this year, when it wasn't raining, people's yards were burning up. Some people have 30, 40, $50,000 invested in landscaping, and they're not gonna let your water pressure, or your water pressure interfere with keeping their plants alive, so they water all day long. We had WCI put in new landscaping in a new part of the development. They're watering all day long, seven days a week, even though the regulation requires for new landscaping, you water from 5:00 PM to 9:00 AM. So picture of WCI watering five days in a row. I ride my bicycle and I walk through the neighborhood. I take pictures, and I found out, you know, pictures are worth thousands of words. Enough said about irrigation. We have water pressure issues when the, when it's dry. This August, we won't have water pressure issues. I guarantee you, we won't have water pressure issues in August. That's my next subject. Storm lake levels. I understand that WCI is still in charge of the 14 storm lakes. Ed calls them ponds.
They're past lakes, Ed.
We have storm lakes, 14 of them. Last August, day after day, we had, as you all remember, had rained, I mean, 10 inches a day. One day, we had 18 inches of rain in one day. The, the level of my lanai is four inches below my house. During, and I would look at this, during high tide, when the water can't get out to the Gulf, it all backs up. During high tide, the water level on my lanai would be three and a half inches, a half inch before it came into my home. The water on Avalon Lake was three feet deep in front of my home. It's not that way during dry season, of course not. What happens is, during high tide, the water can't go anywhere, so it backs up, backs up, backs up. The lakes are kept all summer long at full pool, because the lakes are prettier when the water's all the way to the shoreline. My request is that you all influence, if you can, WCI, to lower the elevation level of the storm lakes. If the water, if there's room in the lakes for water, and they're not at full pool when we have all those rains, the water won't necessarily have to go to the coast, the can, the storm lake will handle the water. Any questions? That's the conclusion of what I want to talk to you all about.
Questions from board members?
Yeah, I mean, who would, um, who on our side would engage FPNO to follow up with the status on the lights?
Well, the manager, if that's what you, if that's, uh, what you want to do, uh, we've talked about these.
So April's got a note, she's gonna, she's gonna engage FPNO.
Wonderful. If, if you wouldn't mind copying me with my card that I included, has my email address, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely. Let's clarify here. Griffin Drive is not ours.
I know that.
It's not under the demise of the CDD.
I know that, and that's why I asked you to contact.
All right, please let me finish. So, I understand, you know, your dilemma with this thing, but the problem is, is like the first thing that you came here for is, that isn't in our capability. And for us to go to a public utility company, and the utility company to respond, what ownership do you have in any of this? The answer is, is we have none. Therefore, we don't really have, it's nice to, you know, hey, let's do, we don't have, so think through that thing.
We don't have a dog in this fight.
No. So, that isn't, you know, we've got enough stuff to focus on, so. And back to the other thing, as far as the lake elevation, the person you should speak to, sitting behind you, handsome devil back there with a blue striped shirt, he can, he can tell you all about the legalities of these water levels, which, et cetera.
I've read about it, yeah.
Thanks, but.
Well, yeah, we'd rather flood people's homes than.
There's this gigantic domain that's called South Florida Water Management District.
I read about it, yeah.
We could write the president, and the South Florida Water Management District.
I'm, I'm familiar with engaging our government officials, as Pam knows. SR82, you all know that's gonna go from two lanes to six. The Secretary of Transportation, Florida, told me, "Jim, there will be no way we do another noise study." They're in the process of contracting for a noise study on SR82 adjacent to Hampton Park, because citizens take action and citizens matter, even though Gateway CDD does not own Gateway, Griffin Drive. You're an influential, influential government body, the HOAs and.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Manager?
Ms. Schaefer, golf carts.
Golf carts again. I am Jane Schaefer from Pelican Preserve. I have a house on De Monte Way. Pelican Preserve golf cart owners are still doing, as they've been told by weekly newsletter issued by Castle Management, to drive on the car truck lane. The city of Fort Myers ordinances state that Pelican Preserve is a designated golf cart community. There is a designated golf cart lane to the far right of all of Pelican Preserve's four-lane roads. This should not be an issue, and I shouldn't have to be here many, many times. No one has changed the original DRI, Development of Regional Impact, or Construction Plans. Therefore, I feel there does not need to be another traffic study, other than, if necessary, to convince the Pelican Preserve Advisory Safety and Security Committee. My suggestion would be to start with a phone call to Carl Carrotis, Engineering Division, Transportation Engineer for the City of Fort Myers. That number is 321-7458. Or the committee do their own research, not depend on someone else to tell them what the research is. Get familiar with the Florida statutes. Get familiar with the City of Fort Myers ordinances, and also municode.com, where you can learn all about Pelican Preserve. If those things could be done, this would have been ended a long time ago. They are the law of the land, and to change things like roads, you have to have a permit, you have to go to the county, you have to go to all the committees. No one has the authority to do that, as far in Pelican Preserve. Put our golf carts back in the designated golf cart lane, where our residents will be safe. Now, I know an issue, it is, it's a bicycle lane. It is not a bicycle lane. It is a golf cart lane. However, bicycles can ride in that lane. In fact, they can ride any place safely on the road at their own discretion.
Questions for Jane?
Yes.
Please.
This may not be a favorable question, but it's something that I have to ask. Last meeting.
Yes.
You made a statement. I want to be sure that you, you made a statement that you feel is absolutely accurate, because I'm on that committee, as is publicly stated in the minutes. You made the statement that Phil Mize, who's here, told you that you were not permitted to be on that committee, and it was my understanding from the get-go, from the beginning, that you were an invited person onto that committee. So.
Okay, may I speak? I was one of the original three people on the committee, and there were things that were not right, like one person go back and take an inventory or a survey of how we can increase certain road speeds, and I tried to speak to that. So-and-so's going to take care of it. There were all kinds of little glitches, but when it came out, that golf cart was going to be, like, pictures up and down the whole Boulevard saying, "No golf carts, no golf carts, bicycles only." I said, "Who's driving this bus?" And I got off that committee. Well, I was, I requested to be on Phil's committee, and it wasn't Phil that said that I wasn't to be on that committee. I said it, but the whole committee voted me off, because they were very unhappy with me.
I didn't vote. I would never do that.
Wait a minute, the P-PAC committee.
Because you said you didn't want to be on the committee, and so they voted to form a committee without you, because you said you didn't want to be on it. You can check the minutes, and you can see, that's what it says.
Well, I thought it was kind of an oxymoron, as I call it, when you say, "I'm not going to be on the committee." Everyone raise your hand if you don't want her on the committee, and every hand would have, except one. But to me, that's neither here nor there. The point is, there are ordinances, there are statutes that speak to this situation, and it was gone on, and you have a very, very active committee, but the leadership has not led them to the statutes and the ordinances, or this would be solved.
That's my second question. Please don't leave. You refer continuously to that, to a statute, and I would...
Yeah, Florida statutes.
I would really like to know exactly where that committee can find that, me being also a part of that committee. I want to be able to go to the Internet, and I want to know where that thing is that says, "And you referenced the DRI." Now, again, if I say something wrong, just correct me.
No.
I can handle it.
You're all right.
You referenced the DRI, and that the DRI designated that as a golf cart lane.
Yes.
If that's the case, I'd love to see that in print.
Well...
And please, give me that reference, so I can look at it.
I got my reference and information by going down to the city office and meeting up with Carl Carrotis. And another gentleman come in, and the first thing he said, "Good news and bad news." I said, "Good news first." And he said, "A committee doesn't have the authority to be doing any of this." And I said, "And what's the other news?" And he said that there was never any changes to the DRI. I didn't see it. I went to the office where I could get that information. As far as statutes, it goes, I've got maybe this thick, because it's under transportation, it's under, under, and recent...
Could you give us a list of that, please?
Jane, can you, can you provide for Mr. Newbauer some of that, so he can...
What I already have downloaded, but...
Sure, sure. I'll read every bit of it.
We've been asking you for that.
Absolutely.
You said, "We wanted your expertise. We wanted you to come to a meeting."
Sure. Okay, okay.
Okay, this stop.
That's enough right now. Thank you very much, Jane.
Okay. Hey, thank you.
That's all.
Mr., that's all?
That's all.
Can we take a short break, please?
Yes. We're going to have a five-minute recess.